To her right is Vice Mayor Drew Combs. To my right is Councilmember Betsy Nash. To her right is Councilmember Ray Mueller. To his right is our City Clerk Judy Heron. If you would like to speak on any agenda item this evening, please provide the City Clerk with a speaker card. Members of the public are encouraged to direct their questions and comments to the City Council. I will ask staff to respond to your questions. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I will come down to read the proclamation. This proclamation is being, is to recognize Ms. Naomi Campbell. Whereas the longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community which benefits from the wisdom, knowledge, and experiences that this individual brings to all. And whereas Naomi Claudette Presley was born in Tulsa, Oklahoma, on February 22, 1919, to Arthur and Prashia Presley, as a proud member of the Muskogee Creek Tribe. And whereas Naomi and her six siblings, Lauren, Helen, Mary, Fay Ann, Ruth, and Arthur, grew up during the Great Depression with a hard-working father and stay-at-home mom. Although it was a time of economic crisis, Naomi grew up with the stories of Tulsa, Oklahoma's Greenwood District, or Black Wall Street, as it was most affectionately known as. And whereas Naomi grew up grounded in the love of family, and it was during the years in Tulsa that she was able to see that no matter what happened in the world, as long as you had the love of family, you could get through anything. And whereas, it was the love of family that led Naomi to move to California during World War II to be with the, with her older sister. It was during this time that she worked in the shipyards. Naomi earned the respect of her fellow workers in the shipyard, in the shipyard, which was a major, a major feat for a Native American and African-American woman during this time, as she was part of the Bay Area's first contribution to victory during World War II, as she assisted in the shipyard building. And whereas while in California, Naomi Presley married and became Naomi Campbell and moved to Menlo Park in the mid-1950s, and has been part of the community for, for over 50 years. And whereas while contributing economically to the community, Naomi also embodied the spirit of "it takes a village to raise a child," as she was known to have fed many of the neighborhood kids hot meals before their days of school started and after the end of the day. Because of this, she has an extended family throughout the Menlo Park community. And whereas Naomi has enjoyed gardening, playing musical instruments, painting, bowling, and watching the community evolve from her living room window. And whereas Naomi has a legacy of four children, four grandchildren, six great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. And whereas the United States has a number of senatarians in the world, and today Naomi Campbell should be celebrated and honored for her 100 years on this earth. Thou now therefore be proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of Menlo Park, do hereby recognize and gratefully acknowledge Naomi Campbell on her 101st birthday. May happiness, good health, and much joy follow you in the years to come. I presented Ms. Naomi Campbell this proclamation on February 22nd, her actual 101st birthday, and here to receive it is her granddaughter Toni Ali.
Would you like to come up with a photo, Council? Direct staff to add one vacancy listing to the current recruitment effort for commissioners and committees, and consider extending the current term for Sister City Committee members to October 1, 2020. The motion to approve the consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Heron. I will go back to Item D2, Presentation of the 2019 Biannual Community Survey. To introduce this item is the President of Godby Research, Brian Godby.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Brian Godby, and I'm pleased to be here to present the third survey that we've conducted for you. In terms of resident satisfaction, we of course also did other work for you in the past as well. So jumping right into this, brief overview of the research objectives. We were interested in gauging community satisfaction and priorities in the community. We obviously are tracking the 2015 and 2017 survey results. We're looking at things like overall quality of life in Menlo Park, a variety of city services, and their satisfaction with them, awareness of city customer contacts, and then sources of communications, and a variety of demographics. These three binders that you see sitting on the table here near me are the complete report. We won't go through all of those tonight. In terms of the methodology, it has evolved over the years. When we did our first survey for you 15 years ago, which led to the UUT measure, that was all landline and cellphone. It's now become landline, cellphone, and email invitations, and more recently, landline, cellphone, email invitations, and text invitations. And as you can see from the list here, the text invitation has become the most prolific way to contact and communicate with respondents to get their feedback. The universe that we looked at was adults 18-plus overall, and then there was a subset of Menlo Park registered voters. We were in the field at the beginning of January through the middle. The average survey on the phone was 25 minutes long. We don't know how long it takes people to answer it online, probably faster. But what happens is we can't keep track. They can start at dinner, and they can then put it aside and do whatever they do during the evening, and come back to it at 3:00 in the morning. And literally, the final submit button is hit at 3:00 in the morning. In the old days of phone-only interviewing, there was no way we could have ever communicated with people that, at that time of day, obviously. So we are now completely on their schedule, and that's the best way to do this. The sample sizes were 847 of the total universe, again, adults 18-plus, and 733 of the registered voters. Again, if you think back to that survey that we did quite a while ago for the UUT, that was about 400 interviews. So because of the online techniques, we can do a lot more interviewing, and it doesn't cost as much. In the old days, when you reached your goal on the phone, you stopped. We don't do that anymore. So that's one of the advantages. And that gives us an error rate of plus or minus 3.3 or 3.6, depending on which of the universes we're looking at. So moving into the key findings, the first question in the survey was, are you satisfied with the overall quality of life in Menlo Park? It's now in round numbers at 80% satisfied when we combine the very and somewhat together. That's up about 7% from where it was in 2017. It's still a little lower than where it was in 2015. And we've seen this pattern all over the Bay Area, particularly, and Northern California more broadly as well. And what my conclusion has been is that the Bay Area is the victim of its own success. And you'll see a little bit more of that later, as the economy has taken off and as Silicon Valley has expanded certainly to the Menlo Park, Mountain View, Redwood City area. There have been other issues that have come along with that expansion. So quality of life has taken a little bit of a drop. The next set of questions drilled down a little bit more into different aspects of quality of life. Menlo Park is a place to raise children. Neighborhood is, your neighborhood is a place to live. Is the community visually attractive, et cetera. What we've done here to make it easier to compare, instead of having to look at five different numbers for each response, we've created a scale. And we call it an intensity score. And so everybody that was received, said it was excellent, they were assigned a 3; good, a 2; fair, a 1; poor, a 0; and don't know, didn't count. So that creates a scale that could be as high as 3 and as low as 0. And you can see the bars here make it easier to compare with the previous years. On this chart, we have 2020 and 2015, largely because the 2017 survey had some different priorities and didn't ask all of these questions. But you can compare them much more easily. It seems somewhat abstract, but if you again think about 3 is excellent, 2 is good, 1 is fair, 0 is poor, then all of a sudden, it becomes a little more in context. The other thing that we look at is a .2 difference between high and low in a given year to define what you see here as tiers. So everything in the top tier is technically tied. There are numeric differences, but statistically, they're about the same. We use that same metric to compare with different years. So if something is a .2 difference from 2015 to 2020 or more, that's statistically significant. If it's not, then it's not a significant difference from, from our point of view. So looking down this list really quickly, you see there are a couple items that are significant based on that. Menlo Park is a place to live is significantly lower than it was in 2015. That's not surprising, given the numbers we just looked at. Menlo Park as a visually attractive community is significantly lower than 2015 as well. The next two items, walkability and place to retire, were just asked in this survey, so we don't have a benchmark to compare with. And then there's a place to shop is at the lowest level. There's no significant difference between where we were in 2015. The next question was the overall, are you satisfied with the job the city is doing to provide services? And this is asked on a scale that's very somewhat satisfied, somewhat and very dissatisfied and don't know. Adding the satisfied together, just to make it easier to compare, you see we're at 68% in round numbers satisfied. That's about 2% lower than it was in 2017, and that was slower than it was in 2015. What we've also seen is the quality of life, as a result of the Bay Area's success, has declined. This perception of city services has declined with it. Even though on other more objective metrics that aren't opinion-based, you might say that your services are equal or better than they were in 2015. The whole idea that the Bay Area is the victim of its own success has taken its toll on this too, unfortunately. The next couple pages are, the drill down then on satisfaction with individual services. We've done the same thing here that I described earlier in terms of the intensity score. The difference is the scale, a very satisfied is a 2, a somewhat satisfied is a 1, a somewhat dissatisfied is a minus 1, and very dissatisfied is a minus 2. So you can see that the rankings are different. If you're looking for, you know, what's somewhat satisfied, that's about a 1. Obviously, if everybody said they were very satisfied, it would be 2. So again, you can compare the significance based on that same metric that I mentioned before, the .2 difference. In the top tier here, the first two items are not statistically significant from any of the previous years that we had data. The third one, police services, is significantly different from 2015, but not from 2017, so that's how you interpret those. I won't, in deference to your time, I won't go through all of these unless there's a specific question. But you can see again, some of them are significantly different and some of them aren't, as we go down the list. And this is the second part of the, the chart. Here, we continue to go down in terms of the tiers. You've got things like sidewalks and downtown events and safe bike paths, which are important, and people are satisfied, but at lower levels. But what I would point to is at the bottom of this chart, traffic flow on major streets during commute hours. And what we've found is this is emblematic of the victim of our own success. This is the problem. As the economy has taken off, and companies have blossomed and moved north, bringing Southern San Mateo County into Silicon Valley more completely, obviously, traffic has increased. And this is a pretty high number. The good news is it's not as challenging as it was in 2017. We've gone from a minus 1.29 to a minus 1.04. That is a significant difference. It's going the right direction. But it is still a very large number. If you look at the percentage that that reflects, it is, and it's not in the chart, but I've got it calculated, it's 20% satisfied and 77% dissatisfied. That's a huge number. Again, it's not unique to Menlo Park. In Silicon Valley, we're seeing that same sort of traffic as a big problem, and I'm sure you're well aware of that.
We have a question.
Yeah, certainly.
On this, some of the slides, you've got the arrow on the right side, which goes from, on this one, 19.7% to 67.5%. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, that's just giving you the range of, in this case, very satisfied and somewhat satisfied together. So we're trying to put it all in context. The same thing is true. If you go back to that scale that was excellent, good, we're adding the top 2, the excellent and the good, together, and that shows the range. Sometimes the range, and this previous slide is a good example, why is it 58 at the bottom and 43 at the top? It's because the number of don't knows and no opinions about 911 response, because not everybody has called 911, is much, much higher than it is for library facilities. So for example, again, to drill down into the data. We had 43% satisfied with 911 response. We had 3% dissatisfied, but we had 54% that were honest and said they didn't know. So the way the mean score, or the intensity score works, is it's really a ratio of positive to negative. And the 43 to 3 is a huge positive ratio, so it gets a good mean score of 1.47. But when you look at, compare that with library facilities, all of a sudden, you have 76% that are satisfied and 10% that are dissatisfied, so it's still a big ratio, but there's only 15% that don't know. So it's important always in those sorts of cases to look at the percentages, which are much more complicated, as well as the intensity score. But of those people that have an opinion, the 911 emergency response is great, but not everybody has opinion because they're being honest with us. That answer your question? Sure. Thank you. So the next question was satisfaction with downtown Menlo Park. Again, very satisfied, somewhat, somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied, neither satisfied or dissatisfied, not sure. We were at 54% in round numbers. We're down 1.5%. Given the survey's margin of error, that's not statistically significant from where we were at 56% in 2015. The next question was, what kind of things would you like to see in downtown in terms of new shopping? Restaurant and bars were the high in 2015 at 26%. We're down to 16, 17% in round numbers. What's jumped up is grocery and Whole Foods. This was an open end, so people are responding how they want to, or how they decide. So we put Whole Foods and grocery stores together because one's generic and one's specific. But we've gone from 7 to 16.
Excuse me, we have some questions.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carlton.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No problem.
I'm curious, when we have something that's 23% other, I would love to hear that feedback.
Yeah.
Can we have a list of what their suggestions were?
Yes, we do. But our policy has always been that if it's less than 2%, there's no point in putting it in the chart because this chart will become pages long. And so basically, there's 10 or 12 different items, maybe more, because some of them are 1% or even lower than that. So you could have 15 items and obviously wouldn't fit on a chart, but we do have it.
I get that with a chart, that's fine.
Yeah.
But sometimes somebody has an idea that maybe 1 in 100 has.
Yeah.
But it's a really good idea that everyone could get behind.
We certainly have that.
So if you could email that to us, just for us to have that, it would be really interesting to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The rest of the items fall off into single digits, so they're really not statistically significant, given the error rate, or unexpected, okay as it is, clothing stores, discount retailers, variety of stores, et cetera. Next question was satisfaction with parks and recreation. Oops, I skipped over one of them. There we go. Yeah. The overall satisfaction with parks, recreation, facilities, and programs. This was new to 2020. We didn't ask this before. We find that 66% gave you an excellent or good score. Just 2.4 gave you a poor or very poor, with 9% saying fair. If you look at the box in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see we've done the math and the ratio of the positive, excellent and good, to the poor and very poor, and that's 28.3 to 1. So that's an overwhelming positive response. Of course, there are 21% of the population that have not used a park or recreation program, and they're being honest and telling us they didn't. But of those that have, again, you have an overwhelming, overwhelming positive. We also drilled down in this survey, as well as the previous surveys in 2017 and 2015, on some of the specifics of parks. And again, it's the difference of what the priorities were in each year when the surveys were crafted. Here, we've got that same satisfied scale from 2 to minus 2. And again, you can look at a .2 difference to be, to indicate that something is significant. So we did have a drop from 2015 in cleanliness, in overall cleanliness of parks, but it's still at 81% at least somewhat satisfied, so that's an overwhelming number. Condition of fields is virtually the same in all three years. Ease of getting to a city park, rounding out the top tier, again, is not statistically different from 2015. In our second tier, we have organized sports for youth and teens, aquatics and swimming facilities, availability of sports fields and courts, and cost of programs in terms of what people are satisfied with. The next slide just shows the remainder of the list, and it goes down, but everything is positive, just at lower levels. The next question, and the question set that follows it, was about the libraries. This was a little bit different than in 2015 and 2017. In those years, we asked, what do you think about libraries and their services together? In this year, we separated them out and said, opinion of libraries, the physical building, and then, as you'll see in a moment, library services. In this survey, we have 60% that said good or excellent versus 2% in rounded numbers that were poor or very poor. And again, if you look in the box in the lower left-hand corner, that's a 38 to 1 ratio. Again, that's a great positive. 24% are being honest and saying they just haven't used the library. You can also see how that broke down in previous years. Some of the not-used was higher in 2015. It was a little lower in 2017, so, but it's all within the margin of error, so there really isn't a difference. The next question, as I said, was, what do you think about the library services? And it's about the same. We're 60% good or excellent, and only 1.5% poor or very poor. Again, a 39 to .3 to 1 ratio. People who use the library and the library services think they're great. Again, drilling down into the specific library services and components, same thing here, very satisfied, very dissatisfied. In our top tier, we have availability of free Wi-Fi and computers for online access at library branches at the top of the list, and really not different from the 2015 data. Customer service provided by library staff, there is a little bit of a dip from 2015, but it's still very high and very positive. And then overall attractiveness and cleanliness of library branches in the top tier of satisfaction, and no difference from 2015. The remainders show things like hours. In the second tier, online services, including eBooks, magazines, library catalog, research databases, then literacy programs, selection of books, selection of Blu-rays, DVDs, CDs, and audiobooks, and then rounding out the second tier of satisfaction, programs and activities for youth and teens. The last question in the library section was the likelihood of using the new library that's in the process in Bell Haven. Not surprisingly, people like their neighborhood libraries. And I think that's what this is showing here. We've got about 20% that are likely to use it. Those are people that live on, obviously, the northeast corner of town. And then the rest of people who live closer to the other library here at Civic Center are more likely to not use that facility. At that point, we switched gears and started talking about the police department. And the first question was effectiveness of the police department in addressing neighborhood concerns. The scale is excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor. We're at 56% when we add the excellent and good together. That was 67 in 2017 and 66 in 2015. So we're down a little bit from those. That is a significant difference. The next public safety question was, do you feel safe walking alone in different areas at different times? Now, this question changed from previous years. In previous years, we asked, do you feel safe downtown during the day? And then we asked separately, do you feel safe downtown after dark? So obviously, we've combined those together, so it's just a general, do you feel safe downtown in your neighborhood or at your neighborhood park? The order is similar, though. People feel the most safe either downtown, any time of day, or in their neighborhood, and their neighborhood park, less so. And when we drill down into why, it's not surprising, again, that it's because of the dark or lack of lighting. Downtown at night, obviously, is well-lit. Their neighborhood park, not necessarily so. So that's what's really driving this. And those concerns at the top of the list, at least the top two, are a little stronger than they were in 2015. But again, that could be more to do with the difference in the questionnaire wording that we chose to, to use this year. The next set of questions... The next set of questions deals with public works services. And the first is, again, excellent, good, fair, poor, very poor. When we add the top two together, we're at 30% in 2020. We were at 32 in 2015. No significant difference there. Drilling down again into the specific services, same very satisfied to very dissatisfied scale. The only thing that is statistically different is trimming and maintenance of trees, which is down a little bit from 2015, in terms of overall satisfaction. Recycling pickup and yard waste pickup, people are very satisfied with at 1.48, 1.43. Garbage pickup is in third. And rounding out the top two tiers, street sweeping. So those are the services that people are most satisfied with. But everything on this chart is positive. The next section dealt with contact with city employees. We first asked, have you had a contact with a city employee in the last 12 months? 42% said they had. That compares to 46% in 2015, a little bit lower, but not statistically significant. Next question was, city department contacted? The highest was the police department. This was not asked in previous years, so we don't have comparisons. But the police department was at 48%. Public Works was at 23. Park and Rec was at 18. City Council was at 13. Admin Services was at 12. And then, we're into single digits from there. We did follow up with those people who had had a contact and asked them whether they were satisfied with the contact on four different dimensions. The first one was courtesy of staff. Again, this is the very satisfied, very dissatisfied scale. We were at 1.18. That means, on balance, people were very satisfied, or somewhat satisfied. When we add the somewhat and very together, it's 81%. We're happy with the courtesy of the staff. Then we go down to customer service. You receive slightly lower at .89. Timeliness of response at .86, virtually the same. And then, getting your problem resolved or your question answered at .61, so the lowest of the two. But Tier 2 is basically all tied. And at the bottom of the scale, you still have 2/3 of the people that had contact that are satisfied with the contact. It's not surprising, not everybody gets their question answered the way they hope it will be answered for a variety of reasons. And that obviously has an impact. But that's still 2/3 of the people that are saying they were satisfied, and I think that's good. The final question was, your preferred sources for community news and information? At the top of the list in 2020 is the city website at virtually 50%. That's really doubled since 2017, when we last asked this question. Next door is really at the same level. It's down just a little bit, but numerically only. It doesn't matter statistically. And I think it's fascinating that Next Door has gone from almost nothing in most cities where we asked it five years ago to being a significant player and source of news in the community. Newsletters were new this time around. They're 31%. Word of mouth is 22%. Sometimes I wonder, as we've looked at, if people differentiate between Next Door and word of mouth. One might be just talking over the backyard fence, but word of mouth might also be Next Door as well. So, you know, sort of a people-to-people contact, whether it is analog or digital, is a big chunk of the way people hear about things going on in the community. Then, from there, you have public notices, city postcards, mailers, newspaper, you know, which 20 years ago was obviously at the top of this list, no longer. Text messages, another electronic medium. Facebook, what's interesting, I think, is people have differentiated between Next Door and Facebook. They're not just saying social media anymore. They understand the difference between the two. So that concludes the presentation we have for this evening. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. And again, there's a lot more information in the detailed report. We think of it as like peeling an onion. There's always another layer in there, so we're happy to answer any questions you have tonight or later on as well.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any follow-up questions before we go to public comment? Our first public speaker is Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening. I'll be brief. The gentleman mentioned a report, so I see that in the deliverables that more is coming. So I would be curious as to when we'll see that. And then, I would like to know how the city departments plan to use the results to make improvements in managing their departments. In other words, what will be done with the information to better life for residents in Menlo Park? I have a few comments, too. A number of the questions didn't ask about actual behavior. For example, downtown. We don't know if those people are really going downtown, or maybe they are downtown, but from the presentation, I couldn't tell. So I think, you know, it's one thing to say I'm very satisfied with downtown, but if you don't actually go there, I mean, that's a different matter. So some did ask about behavior, and yet some did not. And then, I noticed, and it could be because it was comparing with 2015, 17, things were very different then. I didn't see some questions asked about tough issues that the public has expressed dissatisfaction with, such as traffic, housing, homelessness, community engagement, and education. For example, I would have liked to have seen questions that asked opinions on availability of affordable, quality housing, variety of housing options, land use planning and zoning, building and planning application processes, overall quality of new development in Menlo Park. So, you know, I realize there's always room for improvement, and that's what I'm talking about here. I look forward to seeing how these results will be turned into actionable plans by the various departments, and I hope we'll get an update on the topic in about six months. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Nash?
Do we have access to the questionnaire itself and what actually went from the questionnaire into these various summaries? And also, by district or by geographical zone? I know it was precinct-based rather than district-based.
Yeah. Yes, is the short answer. These three binders include the longer version of this presentation. They include the methodology in detail. They include the questionnaire itself. They include the top-line data, which is a quick way to look and see, you know, what the answers were to any given question. And then, they have, the vast majority of it is the cross-tabulations, which do include area based on two dimensions. First, we ask them whether they live east of 101 and a series of questions that we go back to 2015. So we had broken down the city before the council districts that way. We also have the council districts as well. The council districts are only for the voter data. The asking people where they live based on the major arterials and the freeways is how we did it in 2015, 2017. So we've continued that. So both of those are in the cross tabs.
By chance, do you have a slide that shows the map of the areas where you targeted the questions? So if it wasn't necessarily by district, it was by geographical location of the city?
We don't have a geocoding process that we can use, and we do have geocoding for when we're drawing the sample. The sample is weighted based on a variety of different dimensions, including council district. Well, first of all, it's weighted based on the ACS, which is the American Community Survey, for the overall sample. And then, it's based on a variety of demographics and geographics for the voter portion of it, the 733, and that would include council district as well. So we don't necessarily look at this scatter diagram within a council district, just to know that people are in the council district. And that's pretty standard for survey research.
So it's not possible to pull out for each of these questions, the geographic area, the answers by geographic area?
Overall, yes, but not by a person's individual address.
But it is by, so we could take a look at?
Yeah, yeah. You've got it by council district and by...
And also, that would provide, we've got somewhere where we can actually look at the number of responses? Or can you just generally tell us, on all of these, are they, do most respondents answer each question?
Yeah, that's actually in the cross tabs and the top-line data. It shows the don't-know-no-answer category, which is the DKNA. We don't dwell on that in the presentation, but yeah, it'll show you that, that number as well.
And then, final question for me is, going back to what said the city shuttle, and it was in the positive category, but it said 16%. Can you explain that to me one more time, please?
And that was a satisfaction question?
This is on page 23.
So citywide shuttle services, the ranking is .72. So that's positive, and that's what I was referring to. The 16% is the number of people that are satisfied, at least somewhat satisfied. And then, let me just look at that. This is Public Works, so... And what I'm going through now, just for reference, is the top-line report, which has more detail than the presentation, obviously. So this is Public Works.
Actually, perhaps we can take this offline?
Yeah, sure. But, well, here it is. It's 79% don't-know-no-answer. So most people don't have an opinion on the city shuttle service, so that's why the 16% positive to 5% negative comes up with a positive ratio of .72. So the vast majority of the people in the city don't have any experience with it, and so they're not rating it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
On page, it's either page nine or page D 1.9, depending on which one you look at. You asked questions about land use, about traffic, about planning and zoning. If I wanted to dig further into that, is there more information in the, you said there's a thicker document, a thicker report?
Yeah, it's these three binders.
Okay. Because when people say they like or they don't like what we're doing with planning and zoning, it's, I'm curious to find out, are they talking about the amount of time it takes for us to prove it? Or is it the actual zoning itself?
Yeah.
There are nuances that I would like to tease out of that, if that's possible.
That is not in there because that's a follow-up question. I mean, the only thing that's in there is these dimensions where we asked, are you satisfied or not satisfied? Now, there's more information in terms of what these intensity scores are built on. And then, there's cross tabs in terms of demographic or geographic dimensions, but there are no follow-up questions to each of these. I mean, this was a 25-minute survey as it is, and certainly, that's a valid question, but it wasn't one that we asked. So there are no follow-ups. And what we suggest to a lot of our city clients is, if there's particular areas that you're concerned about, that are highlighted from the quantitative data, that sort of suggests that you might conduct focus groups on that topic and ask those more detailed qualitative questions.
Okay. Because you did ask a lot of the right questions, and I appreciate that. It's just very difficult for us to actually act on it if we don't know specifically what they're talking about. But I do take your point that at least we have a general guide as to where to focus.
Do you conduct these surveys for other cities in the region?
Yes.
And how do we compare?
The traffic that is driving your quality of life down is off the charts.
And is that true across the board in cities around us?
No.
No. So this, the traffic issue is the big issue in the city?
That is your big issue, yeah.
Okay. Is it possible to look at the quality of the surveys from other cities?
I mean, that's sort of up to every individual city. Not everybody, to be honest, is released and been as transparent as you have in the last two years, three years, as the numbers have gone down.
So we've been, okay. So some cities have done these, but not released them?
Right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions? Well, thank you for your presentation. Well, let me follow up. I think you answered the questions that Ms. Bramlett brought up. Actually, I think those questions were more for staff about what we would do with this information, from my understanding. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to receive an update on the status of the capital improvement plan and provide direction on project priorities. In the interest of time, and I do realize that it is election night, and my goal was actually to end our meeting by 7:00, and I know that is not possible in eight minutes. So I just wanted to, Justin, did you? Looked like you wanted to say something.
Oh, no, no, just seeing what you're gonna say next.
So I just wanted to bring that up, is that, that was one of the, at least the goal in my mind, was to actually allow time, if anyone in here had not voted, staff, council, or the public, to allow time for that. So, Mr. Lamb, just to keep that in mind. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah. So I just got this at the dais. So I actually don't mind taking the staff presentation and then continuing the item to actually have a chance to look at it before providing direction.
Okay. Do we all agree? Okay, thank you. So we will go ahead and look at staff presentation.
So we will do the presentation, or was the recommendation to continue?
We'll see the presentation and then continue.
Continue the discussion.
Yes, please. The packet we just received on the dais, so we haven't actually looked at it.
Understood.
Thank you.
So my name is Chris Lamb, Assistant Public Works Director. As it's been mentioned, I'm here tonight to give an overview of the CIP, particularly as it relates to the 2020 goal setting. So just to quickly recap the CIP, we have currently 73 funded projects. 34 of those received new funding in 2019, 20. Of those, 34 newly funded projects, 14 were new to the CIP. 20 were existing projects that received new funding. The CIP is broken into seven categories by building, by project type. So buildings and systems are generally city facilities. Environment is our sustainability initiatives. Parks and Rec, stormwater, streets and sidewalk, transportation and traffic. And water systems are all pretty self-explanatory. In 2019, for the first time, we went through a prioritization process to kind of triage the existing projects and came up with tiers 1, 2, and 3. The CIP also consists of a number of programmatic categories. Parks miners, sports field renovations, et cetera. Those are either categories that receive funding annually, and then the city does smaller projects out of those funding sources, or they are essentially savings accounts to build up enough funds to do a larger project. So for the 2020 goal-setting, some of the talking points that staff's prepared for council, if these are the correct ones, would be, if there's any additional project information that council's seeking as part of their goal-setting and work-plan efforts. Are there any project priorities that should be adjusted? And are there any projects that staff should not pursue? And that's kind of a two-parter, either in this current upcoming fiscal year or ever. So quickly, just to recap what the capital improvement plan is, it's a five-year plan representing the community's vision for short and long-range development, essentially of the city's infrastructure assets. It's updated annually and funded annually with a four-year look ahead. Projects are proposed by department heads through the city budget process, and is a reflection of council priorities defined through the goal-setting and work-plan adoption. And so then, those projects are evaluated and ultimately funded via the city council-approved budget. Like I said, in 1920, we, recognizing that we had a number of staff vacancies at the time, that would not allow for all the projects to proceed concurrently, CIP projects were prioritized using the following criteria into... prioritized using the following criteria into tier one, two, and three. So, just to kind of recap where those tier-one projects all landed, it was kind of across the board into the different categories. We see here how many projects we have in each category, how much we've completed. So, I just want to note that the, in the transportation and traffic section, there's a zero listed in terms of the projects completed. That's a bit of a misnomer. There were a few projects that we actually completed, and then subsequently added more funding to those projects and increased the scope or changed the scope. So, the Willow 101 construction was completed, and then more funding added to enhance the landscaping. The current phase of Middle was a planning, or the previous phase of Middle Avenue undercrossing was a planning phase that was completed. Now, we're into design. And our Oak Grove Bike Boulevard was completed, and now we have a project, additional project funding to extend that project.
So, then what's the number that should be there? Is it four?
So, it would be, it would be a three for the traffic and transportation. You can also see in the far right column that the project's not started, so I'll be going through some of those briefly as well. Of our tier-one projects, there were 22. All the tier-one projects are either completed or in some stage of progress. You can see at the very bottom, there's a discrepancy of six or eight. So, that's essentially if we, if we're counting the Bell Haven Library and the Bell Haven Youth Center, which were both considered tier-one projects, those are going to be repurposed into the Bell Haven Community Center and Library. So, in construction right now, we have a number of projects that are underway. The picture to the right is the Oak Grove Safe Routs to School and Green Infrastructure Project. And then, I think more impressive is what we have upcoming here in the relatively near future. So, we have four projects that are currently either bidding or are ready to be awarded by the city council. We have a couple more that are soon approaching. And then, by the end of the year, there's a pretty long list of projects that we expect to get into construction. And I'll explain why we're, why we're at this place in a second here. So, how do we, how do we deliver projects? So, the bulk of the CIP is delivered by Public Works. Public Works has, by Public Works Engineering, I should say. And Public Works Engineering has four distinct divisions. We have the CIP Group managing a number of different types of projects. Utility Section that manages primarily the stormwater and water projects. Our Land Development Section will manage projects that are directly related to land development projects. And our Transportation Section, obviously, is working on the traffic and transportation projects. So, this time last year, if we looked at this chart and how many FTEs and vacancies there were, the CIP Group actually had seven FTEs. So, we added one in last year's budget cycle, or added a half FTE in the budget cycle. But at the time, there would have been four vacancies out of the seven. And of those three remaining bodies, one of them was a construction inspector, and the other two were actually engineers working on projects. So, we've gotten fully staffed in this last year, and we're making a lot of progress on the CIP category projects. We currently have three vacancies in the transportation group, and as we go through and look at some of the project statuses, you'll see that reflected in there as well. The CIP Group, you know, when we're working on library projects, police projects, sustainability projects, we're coordinating with other departments in the city, so we've shown some linkages to other departments as well. There, when we talk about staff resources and needs on projects, that plays a critical role in what we can, what we can accomplish. So, one more slide, and then we'll get into the actual projects themselves. This go-around, we've all said, I added a column of what it takes to complete a project. So, from a staff resource standpoint, not all projects are equal. Some are pretty easy to accomplish, some take a lot of time and energy. And some of the key factors that affect that are, you know, the technical complexity. The biggest is probably the public engagement. You know, every time that we're having a community meeting, if there's a community working group established for a project, city commissions, city council subcommittees, and coming back and forth to the city council for decision-making processes, that all takes time that eventually adds up. Grants, a lot of times, have particular restrictions or requirements that we have to make sure that we track and meet the requirements of partnering funding agreements. So, if we work with developers or other agencies, again, just time and effort to enter into those agreements. And then, finally, I'll just note that community impact, obviously, we have the project to resurface Santa Cruz that's out to bid right now. That's a lot different than resurfacing Alma right here next to the Burgess Park. So, the community impact drives the need for staff to, you know, really analyze a project and make sure that we can execute it smoothly. Cross-departamental projects, so the Bell Haven Community Center and Library is a great example of a project that has individuals from the city manager's office, sustainability, obviously, the library, community service, and Public Works, all working together to make sure that we deliver the best project. That's a lot of people, that's a lot of resources being spent on one project. Okay. Moving forward onto the projects. I'm not going to go through everyone on here, but I'll highlight a couple of them. And then, I'm also going to highlight the ones that we haven't started and let you know kind of why we haven't started it, and when we would either expect to start it, or if we're not planning on starting it in this upcoming year. So, obviously, the first two are going to be repurposed. The Bell Haven Library and the Bell Haven Youth Center will be repurposed into the Bell Haven Community Center and Library. Also, just want to point out that under the City Buildings Minor, which is kind of a fund that we use to move forward kind of smaller projects, there's been a project that's been on the books for, I think, six or seven years to do some renovations in the lobby of the police department to improve the police records counter. So, we have that project finally ready to award. Also, in the buildings and systems, so the facilities master plan is actually, it's like, it's a condition assessment of existing facilities. That project's not started. It's actually, you know, so the reason that we're holding off on that one right now is we're also underway with getting a new asset management and work order system up and running. So, we want to make sure that we have that software tool ready and up and running so that when we, when we do this condition assessment, we have, we have the tools to plug that data into and begin utilizing. Furniture replacement was, I think, originally programmed as part of the main library improvements when there was an offer on the table to build a new main library. This $400,000 furniture replacement project was established for that. It hasn't been touched since then, and there's no plan to in this upcoming fiscal year. Onto our environment projects. The Heritage Tree Ordinance Program Evaluation is substantially complete, so the council already has adopted the new Heritage Tree Ordinance. It'll go into effect July 1st, so the kind of outstanding item is making sure that we get the implementation on that correct. The item on here that's not started is the Sea Level Rise Resiliency Plan, and the reason behind that is with the new formation of the Sametail County Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency, it's a mouthful. We don't want to duplicate efforts that they're going to do. So, we're kind of in a wait-and-see approach to see that they're still getting up and running full steam, but we don't want to, you know, we recognize, and when we recommended the formation of the agency, sea level rise really needs to be tackled from a regional perspective. And so, we're, we have this project on hold and don't necessarily plan on proceeding this fiscal year either. In parks and recreation, kind of the nice one that we accomplished this year was the Nilon Park Playground Equipment. I think everyone's been real happy with the result on that one. We have additional monies programmed in this item for Burgess Park in this upcoming fiscal year, and then Willow Oaks Park in the second year. Willow Oaks Park itself, down at the bottom there, has not been started. This one's more relates to staffing resources in terms of being able to get to it, but we do feel that we'll be able to start this project this winter after a couple of the projects finish up on the CIP. And then, finally, sports field renovations, it's like I mentioned before, is a bit of a savings account to build up enough revenue to start to renovate some of our fields. Not necessarily expecting to start this project in this upcoming fiscal year either. In our stormwater section, I just want to highlight the Chrysler Pump Station. So, the city was awarded a FEMA grant in the value of about $5 million over the winter. So, that project, we are going through the federal environmental clearance process right now. That's supposed to wrap up around July, so we're doing a bit of final design cleanup and expect to get that project out to bid soon thereafter. Onto our streets and sidewalks. The first two are under construction. Chilco Street is very near completion. Our Oak Grove Safe Routs to School and Green Infrastructure Plan is, infrastructure project is underway as well. Down towards the bottom there, a couple up in the bottom, the downtown parking structure study. So, this is actually an item that would be good for probably council to discuss in some extent. The, you know, what staff is hearing is that there may be a desire to re-envision downtown with an update to the specific plan. Doing a parking structure study should probably wait until that effort is completed. So, we're not proposing to start this effort until either we get direction from council to start, or that other effort takes place. Downtown Parking Utility Undergrounding, so that project, the council approved three undergrounding districts on February 25th. There's still a little bit of work to do. We still need to identify which of the projects we want to move forward with. I don't think the council received the presentation that night, but there really is only funding to do two of the three, and it's only two of the three if one of the two is Alma. Further discussion. Downtown Streetscape Improvements is on hold, so that was funding for the street cafes. So, again, we're looking for some direction from council on how to proceed on that project. The plazas, seven and eight are on, have not been started yet, but we expect those to start this fiscal year as well. Traffic and transportation, like I said earlier, Middle Avenue, we got through our planning phase, and earlier in January, council approved the alignment options, so the 30 percent design. So, that project is proceeding forward in design. Our transportation master plan, we expect to bring a draft to council in May. So, that's an important one to get over the finish line, so to speak. There's a lot of projects identified in the transportation master plan. Haven Avenue, city council approved funding for that project. The rest of the projects that show as not started, so our Oak Grove University Crane Bicycle Extension, and then here on the second page, the Middlefield Infield Santa Monica Crosswalk Improvements, the Middlefield Ringwood Ravenswood Signal Modifications, and the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets are all purely staff-related and staff resource reasons for not starting those projects yet. In the water system, all the projects are in progress. I'll just highlight that the emergency well project over at the Coop Yard is nearing completion. We have a date from PG&E to set a transformer at the end of this month, and then, at that point, we'll be ready to start testing the well. That's as fast as I can get through that. For the upcoming fiscal year in 2021, staff isn't proposing to add a bunch of new projects. We feel that we have quite a bit to still get through on the existing CIP. That list of projects that are about to go out to bid and out to award is going to take us well into 2021. There are a few projects that we wanted to go ahead and daylight at this time. So, obviously, the Bell Haven Community Center and Library is a top priority. O'Brien Avenue, or, excuse me, O'Brien Drive Streetscape and Utility Improvements, so Tarleton Properties has come to the city with a desire to take the lead on doing some improvements along O'Brien Drive, utilizing some deferred frontage improvement agreements that they've paid into already. And the city, at that time, would take the opportunity to improve the water system. I think there's also a desire to do some utility undergrounding by Tarleton Properties and also install recycled water pipeline for future recycled water.
Can you repeat, excuse me, for a moment? Can you repeat the last part of what you just said?
In terms of all the utility improvements?
Latter part of what you stated, as far as what Tarleton wanted to do, as far as the improvements of O'Brien Street. Your voice got lower and lower.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So, Tarleton Properties has come to the city to, with a desire to do improvements on O'Brien Drive from Willow Road to University. That includes sidewalks, curb gutter and sidewalks, improving the water line, installing recycled water pipeline, and for some portions, although I don't have that detailed information, also some utility undergrounding. So, this would be a project that we would need to allocate some funding towards to coordinate with Tarleton Properties, and in the case of the Water Division, assigning some funds to partner with Tarleton Properties to get that work done.
Is that part of a development project, or is that just in philanthropic interest of theirs?
So, Tarleton Properties, with over a number of tenant improvements they've been doing over the years on their properties that front O'Brien and in the life sciences area, have paid into deferred frontage improvement agreements. So, instead of doing frontage improvements, they've been paying for the value of those agreements. They have the option of coming back and doing the work themselves. So, they've paid into enough of them that they feel that they've, they can do that work now. We also wanted to just make sure that council, remind council about the AHSC grant improvements that were approved for, to apply for the grant funding. And then, a couple of water projects that the Fireflow Capacity Improvement shows on the current five-year CIP, so that would just be one that we do plan on continuing to move forward with. And then, on our, the Water Division has a 10-year look ahead on our CIP, so we want to move a project forward for the emergency water interconnect at Alma Street, and that would be in advance of the Middle Avenue undercrossing. So, that's pretty much it. Again, we're looking for if there's any particular information that would help council in the goal setting and work plan process. We'd love to get that feedback tonight, or as soon as possible, so that we can start preparing that information for council. If there's any project priorities that should be adjusted, we'd love to hear that as well. And if there's any projects staff should not pursue in this upcoming fiscal year or longer. And that is it.
Thank you for the presentation. We have two public speakers. The first is Len Bramlett.
As you probably know, when one studies the CIPs in the budget document, they're missing a lot of information, project information, status, money. And I used to wonder about that, and we were told, from serving on the Finance and Audit Committee, that it would take about seven hours to supply the needed information to have more details per individual projects. So, when I read this report by Matrix Consulting, I think a lot of the root cause is in here. I think the consultants have identified some great suggestions. And my question tonight would be, I see them very much as, you know, connected, interconnected. A number of them pertain directly to the CIPs. So, I don't want to, I know we want to end here early, so I won't go into detail, but recommendation number three, resource-loaded project schedule for each fiscal year speaks specifically to the CIPs. And then, there's one here, a final report should be prepared upon completion of all capital projects. Department should develop a capital improvement projects development and management handbook for more consistency. And then, to the councilmember's Nash point, it relates, the land development section should centralize the calendar of developer deferred improvement agreements. So, it, I'm not sure the developers are held accountable, and I don't mean, I'm not trying to imply anything sinister, but it just seems like there are a number of process recommendations here that are, you know, very useful, very valid, well-thought-out. And so, I hope that the public and council will get an update regarding when these will be worked on. Not expecting Rome to be built in a day, but I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you for your Thank you for your public comment. The next public speaker is Josie Galliard.
Good evening, council. Josie Galliard, I serve on the Environmental Quality Commission. And I'd like to just direct you to Ryan Price, Chair of the UC. Her comments that were sent in to you all for the commission's comments on the CIP. My comments tonight are just mine. So I wanted to just commend you for taking a look and reviewing the CIP. It's an important job and not maybe the most exciting. But one of the opportunities will be for you to look at the CIP with the lens of climate. There are a lot of opportunities, not necessarily in sort of the big new projects, but in the day-to-day maintenance of things like furnaces and hot water heaters, for example, in the municipal buildings, that I'd like to see an emphasis be placed on moving those pieces of equipment from gas to electric. So every opportunity that there is to convert city equipment from a fossil fuel burning device, whether it's a vehicle or a hot water heater or an HVAC piece of equipment, I'd like to see those be converted to electric. That will require, I think, clear direction from the council because it won't be, it will be new. So I think that that's something that will have to be, that direction will have to be given specifically to staff. And then also, there are a number of items that are related to waste, making investments in waste reduction. For example, the bottle filling stations. That, given the climate crisis, I'd like to see, personally, I'd like to see those dollars diverted to reducing carbon. Although waste is an issue, the carbon emissions issue really threatens the city in a way that the waste issue doesn't. So with precious dollars, I'd like to see them placed there. And also, just sort of back to the point about equipment replacement, there's sort of a prudence argument as natural gas needs to be phased out so we can address the climate crisis. That equipment, if, for example, a furnace was expired within the municipal operations today and was replaced with another gas furnace, that gas furnace could be in place for as long as 30 years. And at some point, the city may no longer be using natural gas, in which case, that would be, from a prudent standpoint, that would have been a poor investment. So I'd like to urge you to really consider that in your choices. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I just wanted to add one thing before we continue. And it's actually kind of, I actually view it as strategically beneficial we're continuing so people can think about it. But it's the first time I've had a chance to talk about the parking lots with you guys, potentially parking structures. And going into that, I just wanted to say that in prior conversations when councilmember Carlton and I were on that subcommittee, where it had been left before it was sidelined was that we were talking about two structures, one with housing on top and then the secondarily with potentially doing a small-scale movie theater on the bottom of some sort of public amenity. The reason why was because we thought like, we felt that, number one, obviously entertainment uses are needed in our downtown and there would be something in it for the public. And then secondarily, the housing for the downtown, for the second structure, was going to be something that would help, because we own the lots, one. So they're immediately buildable and an opportunity site, secondarily, for downtown workers. So I throw that out there tonight for you guys to think about. It's something I want to talk about later. But I will tell you that I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of stakeholders recently, both business holders in our downtown, property owners, developers, residents who care about housing. I think there's public support from it. So I'd really encourage you guys to, between now and we have that conversation, sort of reach out and talk to people about it, see what they think about it. So, thank you.
I agree and support what you're saying.
Are there any other follow-up comments, questions? Councilmember Nash?
I just want to echo some of what Josie Galliard said and just point out that current, last year, not even 2% of the budget was, went to environmental issues. And given our climate crisis, given that the council has approved reach codes, given that we've adopted several resolutions of climate action, I would strongly like to look at doing more on the Climate Action Plan and also anything that we can do to make our city a model city in, with 100% electricity, moving all of the city, the HVAC that's on the CIP. And I'll look at doing that as electric rather than gas. Thank you.
I have a lot of comments, but I'll just save them until we get together and bring this up and we can discuss it at great length.
I only raised that one just because I wanted people to be able to chew on it. So we can save the rest till later.
Happy Super Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it and your patience and also honoring the fact that it is Election Day. So I expect to see a sticker on everyone, that's staff, public, and I'm sure the council has already voted. All right, the meeting is adjourned.
May Taylor, quick, are we forwarding or continuing this to the next meeting or a future meeting?
A future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.